Good evening. My name is Jordan Fonville and I'm a senior at the Oxon Hill High School. My GPA is 3.83. I'm a, I am the wing commander of our Air Force Junior ROTC unit and a member of our varsity football team. I participate in Air Force Junior ROTC Varsity Football, National English Honor Society, Kitty Hawk Air Society, HJ Aviation Flight Club, the multimedia ministry at my church, and the United States Naval Academy Polar Science Program. This year I'm taking AP Literature and AP Physics B. My plans for the future are to attend the United States Naval Academy and to major in Oceanography. My long-term goal is to become a naval aviator in the United States Navy or the United States Marine Corps and to make a positive impact in the lives of many. I'm a proud Oxon Hill High School student and I'm ready for college. Now I want to welcome you to the August 22 Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting. Highlights this evening will include a first day of school news break and proclamations commemorating National Day of Service and Remembrance, Constitution Day, and National Hispanic Heritage Month in the Prince George's County Public School System. Additionally, Board of Education will address Prince George's School Mental Health Initiative: Enhancing Student Success. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the August 22 Board of Education Meeting will begin.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the August 22, 2013 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education, the first Board Meeting for the 2013-14 School Year. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone as always to turn off any wireless communication devices as they will interfere with the microphone and taping of the meeting. Of course, I also want to thank very much the young man, Mr. Jordan Fonville, 12th grader of, 12th grade student at Oxon Hill. Thank you very much, young man. He was a wonderful host for those of us who've visited Oxon Hill as well. Also, please note that our colleague, Mr. Burrows, will not be here this evening, but here this evening for the very first time. Please join me in welcoming our new student Board Member, Ms. Ruquayet Muse Ario. And Dr. Anderson, would you now please lead in the Board Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to admit it to that which is just to all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding in this field. Let's rejoice to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for all its success, for my nation under God, in the physical, the spirit, and the just world.
Ah, which one the heck one it was? Uh, colleagues, prior to, uh... Oh yeah, which one was that? Okay, prior to adoption of the agenda, please note that the following items, item 8.9, ratification of the tentative agreement with Prince George's County Education Association has been removed. May I have a motion to adopt the August 22, 2013 Board of Agenda?
Excuse, um, excuse me, Mr. Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda?
Yes ma'am.
So that we move the public speakers on non-agenda items after 4.1 to be 4.2?
So moved. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So we will move so both agenda and non-agenda item speakers will be together. Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Now may I have a motion to approve the Board Meeting Agenda as amended?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the agenda has, uh, has been passed. Uh, colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the April 17, 2013, the June 27, 2013 Board Meeting, and the July 9, 2013 Emergency Board Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
It has been moved. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been, oh, I thought that was, oh, I swear to that, oh yeah, okay. Thank you. Uh, let's see, so where am I? Okay, that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All right, we're keeping things nice and lively first day of school. We're moving around the agenda items a little bit for you, seeing who's paying attention. Clearly not me. Ms. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Dr. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Beck. Mr. Burrows. Ms. Epps.
Here.
Ms. Eubanks. Ms. Higgins.
Here.
Ms. Jacobs.
Present.
Dr. Kaufman.
Present.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Ms. Muse Ario. Ms. Boston.
Here.
Dr. Eubanks.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, if I'm, if I'm back on target now, I think, right? Okay, let's go with item number 3.6. We will now have a news break titled "First Day of School."
This is the best high school in Prince George's County, Oxon Hill Clippers.
Standing atop the school seal in the rotunda of Oxon Hill's spectacular new high school, ROTC Cadet Jordan Fonville described why it's the sweetest of spots in a school of proud traditionists.
This is our Oxon Hill High School crest. We have navis semper navigens. That means "May the ship sail forever." This is our Quipper ship, obviously, in a, in a body of water, the state of Maryland flag, Oxon Hill High School, and this is our map of knowledge. Right here, at this point, is the acoustic epicenter of Oxon Hill High School. If you stand right here, the entire school can hear you.
On August 19, the entire county could hear Jordan's voice and that of 124,000 other Prince George's students as they returned to classes on the first day of school. Filling hallways that had been empty for months, settling into new routines, smiling to be back among their friends, and yes, crying when mom finally had to go. There was a palpable sense of anticipation wherever you went, for with local leaders now in charge of the schools, there is plenty of community goodwill. And Prince Georgians are feeling for the first time in a long time that they may have home-team advantage and that their time has finally come.
How do you feel this morning?
I feel great this morning, really excited about the opening. I'm always excited about the opening of school, but, you know, this morning's even more excited, exciting for me as I come back home. Uh, I went to school not very far from here, Bladensburg High School, uh, and, you know, it's just great to be, you know, back, back where I, you know, grew up.
It's like we've come full circle with Dr. Maxwell coming in here. I mean, I met him when I was a new delegate in this area when he was at Northwestern, and have him come back home to Bladensburg, uh, where he went to high school. Uh, so no, I'm, I'm excited about this. I mean, everybody's excited.
Prince George's County is on the rise, and Oxon Hill High School, when you look at this hallway, these new science labs, everything about this building communicates excellence. Everything about this building says that we're counting on our kids to study hard, to do well, and to meet the needs that we have, especially in science, technology, engineering, and math.
And this is a state-of-the-art building. The kids have everything they could possibly need. As you can see, we have brand-new computers, and I think we're even getting some newer equipment, um, eventually, but everything, you know, we have smart board technology in every classroom. It, it's a teacher's dream.
What's your first impression when you go home tonight? What are you gonna say about this place?
Look, I got a new school.
As the buses rolled in the predawn darkness, a day of emotion and excitement began on the 19th. And whether they were coming back to brand-new schools like Oxon Hill or the magnificent new Avalon Elementary, or perhaps to the colorful new Dawswell Brooks Elementary, housed in its original walls, or indeed to any of the 204 school buildings glistening in their first-day sheen, it was a day for students to reconnect, to show off the latest in backpack fashion, and to wonder anew about what a new school year would bring.
What grade are you in?
Fifth.
Fifth grade. What do you like about this school?
I have a nice principal and nice teachers. And my grandma worked here.
Oh, really? What does your grandma do?
She's like a custodian.
Wonderful. Yeah. What grade are you in?
Third grade.
Third grade. Do you like this school? Why do you like it?
Because it's like, I get to study, I get to read, I get to do math, do science, so, so steady.
Yeah, what do you want to do when you grow up?
I want to be a police.
All right.
While a home team is now in charge of the schools, the feel of home at school has always been there, especially in the early grades. Witness the warmth and concern of pre-K and kindergarten teachers who helped dry most, if not all, of the first day's tears.
You're gonna be the best in first grade? Okay, all right, I expect you to be. The Lord blessed us with some fantastic children today. They're not crying, they're not running away, they're excited. It's just a blessing. They just, they're just here, and they're excited about coming to school, and that's the most important. They're only four, so this experience, a great experience, will let them be lifelong learners.
If an abundance of love is making a difference at Bladensburg, so too is the completely new interior at Dawswell Brooks, a building not renovated since 1952. With new smart boards, fully-equipped computer labs, a new library, and color-coded hallways, the principal, the parents, and the students are ecstatic, and they're convinced that light, bright, and airy can translate into academic success.
We love the new Dawswell!
Was it worth the wait?
It was absolutely worth the wait. It is gorgeous, the colors are gorgeous, it is vibrant, it is bright, and it, it is a place that any and every student would want to come to to learn.
And I believe our students are going to perform fantastic this year because, once you have elevated the environment, the expectation is higher, so we're very, very proud and we're hoping for the best.
It's lovely, I love this school. I'm walking around, see hallways that were here, and I'm like, I'm getting lost, so I had to make sure I count the classes to get back to where I come from, because I have a child here, then I have another child in the fourth grade. So, we've been here when it was the old school and now the middle school, and it's absolutely beautiful.
At the new Avalon Elementary, built during a season of unrelenting rain and with back hose still visible, the school felt particularly like home since the same principal is presiding over a school attended by the parents of her newest students.
Are you almost amazed that it's where it is right now? I know there's still work to be done, but, but the fact that we do get to open these doors on day one?
Yes, I'm amazed, because just last week, they had, uh, trucks out here digging up dirt, and this was never, not any grass. In a matter of a day, grass got down and the, nothing was painted, so yes, I'm very amazed.
Um, Dr. Bruce was my principal. I went to this school when I was young, and now I'm 24, so I've been at Avalon Elementary for a minute, but it's a nice school. I hope the education is still the same, and I hope my daughter enjoys it. She's following my footsteps.
Along with all the new resources and a new partnership between county agencies and the schools, the county has actively recruited new teachers as well. The message, not unlike Jordan's clarion call from Oxon Hill, is come be part of something wonderful, and just maybe discover that you want to make Prince George's County your home for a long time to come.
Well, here you are, with these great facilities. How does this make you feel?
It makes me feel great, um, it's my first year teaching, so to have this experience is amazing.
You know, to inaugurate a new room, no one else will ever be the first one in this room. It will always be you, yeah?
Maybe I'll stay here forever then.
The Prince George's County Public Schools: Opportunities for a Lifetime. With Grant Kittleson, this is Dave Zarin reporting.
Ladies and gentlemen, what a wonderful representation of the great things happening in, in our schools on opening day and every day at Prince George's County. Thank you so much, particularly for our, our film crew and our communications department for a job very well done. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to the report of the chair, item 3.7. Uh, I'm gonna start, uh, my report by taking a moment to recognize and, and pray for and thank some of our friends and colleagues who have passed on, and provide them with a moment of silence. I will read their names and, and hopefully, and then ask you to join me in a moment of silence. Jennifer R. Lamb, she's a registered nurse from Barack Obama Elementary School. Winnie Seedy, a paraprofessional educator at Chapel Forge Early Childhood Center. Leander S. Vines, father-in-law of my friend and colleague Regina Jacobs, school board member, District 5. Barry Marshall, stepfather of Jarrell Everett Jones of PGCPs Office of Communications. Julia Marion Nelson, mother of Henrietta Kleist of the Office of Human Resources, and Hortense Adams, longtime matriarch at Deerfield Run Elementary School. Friends, please join me in a moment of silence for our friends. Thank you for the memories that they provided for us. Now onto other notes from the chair. On Saturday, August 10, 2013, the Prince George's County Public School System hosted our third annual Back-to-School Fair at the Showplace Arena. This year, in partnership with business and community sponsors, we were able to donate over 5,000 backpacks and school supplies to our Prince George's County students. Additionally, parents and students were able to meet their school representatives and learn from more, uh, from more than 200 representatives from our school system how to enjoy a successful 2013-14 school year. Special thanks to our sponsors, to Vice Chair Boston for representing us at the Back-to-School Fair, to our communications department, and the entire Prince George's County Public Schools System for all you did to make this event a tremendous success. I want to offer kudos to a few students. Congratulations to Maryland's first-ever Governor-for-a-Day, Ms. Gina Harrison, an eight-year-old fourth grader at Rosa Parks Elementary School. Ms. Harrison was the winner of the inaugural Governor-for-a-Day con, essay contest launched by Governor O'Malley this past spring to encourage young women to pursue careers in public service. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Harrison and the Prince George's County Public School Systems for having the very first student governor. Kudos goes out to teachers. Congratulations to Albert T. Lewis of Walker Mill Middle School for being the recipient of the Steve Harvey Best School Teacher Neighborhood Award, excuse me. Many of us already know him to have been a recipient of our Teacher of the Year Award. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Lewis for being recognized nationally for his extraordinary contributions to the classroom. Now I want to talk a little bit about the first day of school as well. Wow, what a great first day of school. I and my fellow Board members had the privilege of welcoming hundreds of staff, parents, and teachers back to school for what we know will be a productive and successful year. My fellow Board members visited schools all over the county. I had the privilege of joining Dr. Maxwell, our CEO, uh, my friend and colleague Kenneth Haynes, who's here with us today, the president of the Prince George's County Education Association, along with County Executive Baker and Governor O'Malley, visiting five great schools. We started bright and early, I mean, bright and early, 5:00 AM at the CEO's house, and we, uh, went and visited the Bladensburg Bus Lot and greeted our staff and bus drivers on their way to picking up their children. We then visited Bladensburg Elementary, Central High School, Andrew Jackson Academy, Barnaby Manor Elementary, and ended at the new Oxon Hill High School. I was simply blown away by the innovative, substantive, and creative academic programs being offered at these schools. And from the PTA President at Barnaby Manor, who says she was there every single school day, to the incredibly talented students speaking fluent French and learning Japanese at Central High School, I can't see how anyone who actually spends time in our schools could not be impressed. What, and you saw the pictures, but for those of you who haven't had a chance to visit the new Oxon Hill High School, wow, you have got to get to go see this marvel of innovation and technology. The look of pride among those Navy ROTC cadets like the young man who we met today, standing pencil straight as we entered the school, was a sight to behold. What an incredible day. Now, as I said, all of our Board members had tremendous experiences, and, uh, we don't have the time for every Board member to share a great story with you. Some of you may notice, we like to talk a bit. We could be here for a while. But, how about I do this? I'd like, at this point, to cede one minute of my time to each of the first three Board Members who buzzes in, who wants to tell us about your first day of school. Little bit of a science bowl competition. All right, come on, ready, set, go. Who's buzzing? Ah, I knew Ms. Waller would be first. Ms. Epps. Anyone else wants to talk about their first day of school? Ah, there you go. All right, and, and, okay, there's a tie between Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Valentine. We may have to let them split the time. Ms. Waller, okay, colleague, so you have 60 seconds. Tell us a, a story about your great first day of school.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Certainly, in school board District 3, we had a wonderful kickoff on day one. I visited, uh, about five schools, high school, elementary, and middle school. It was exciting, and I would like to send a very, very special shout-out to our teachers and administrators for their hard work, but the opening of school was so important from the support that we received from our support staff, and we want to do a shout-out to the support staff that worked untiringly, and it was so exciting to see all of our young people excited, ready, willing to come back to a new school year.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Epps?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I actually had to make reference to my notes because I saw so many schools today, I can't even keep them all straight, but on day one, I had the privilege of starting out with, um, Buck Lodge Middle and, um, James Duckworth and, um, High Point High School, and it was just so wonderful to see the children back and ready to learn. Um, it, it was just a, an awesome experience. Actually, I also had experience, um, day two and day three, so, um, day two, I had an opportunity to go to Laurel Elementary School, um, and then day three to James Harrison, where Dr. Williams practically kidnapped me because she was so excited to have, um, to have us here and to see, and I got the chance to see the children do the morning announcements on TV, which was incredibly exciting to see them so poised, and, um, and, and they have a wonderful mantra which I have tweeted, so.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Valentine, Ms. Jacobs has said she'll, she'll give you the honor.
Well, thank you, Ms. Jacobs, for giving me the honor. Uh, well, my, my first day of school began the night before, preparing my two children for their first days. My son Curtis is a kindergartner at John Hansen Montessori, and my daughter, who's, uh, I call her unofficially the youngest person in our district, she's three years old, um, and she's starting at John Hansen Montessori as well. Uh, she did not start on her first day because there's a phasing-in process with Montessori, so she won't start for a couple of weeks. Um, so my night, um, sort of began with telling her that she won't be starting school tomorrow, um, which was a longer conversation than you would think. Um, uh, for many of you know that the first day of school was this week, but teachers came back a week earlier, so I had the opportunity to actually visit a few schools and speak with those teachers on their first day back to encourage them, um, and to show them how much we supported them. Um, on the first day, I had a chance to join, uh, Ms. Jacobs and Councilwoman Ingrid Turner at Heather Hills Elementary School. We also joined representatives from the Fire Department, um, and from the County Executive's Office to show the, uh, the team of people who are putting, who, who've come together for education, uh, in our county, and also had a chance to visit Green Belt, um, Middle School, which is in its second year, uh, at the building, very new, uh, building, actually reconnected with the principal, who was my assistant principal when I taught at Oxon Hill Middle School, so it was a reunion of sorts for me. Uh, but overall, as a parent and a Board Member, uh, the first couple of weeks have been very exciting, and I'm looking forward to the school year.
Thank you, and thank you all. I, I can promise you that, uh, as, as much fun as we had the first day of school, will be there day 10, day 30, day 50, day 180, uh, giving our schools the, the support and the encouragement that they need. Uh, thank you so much, colleagues, for your dedication. Couple of other quick points. Uh, upcoming events, on September 12, we have a system oversight meeting at 1:00 PM. Uh, also, uh, at, um, we have a 2015-2020 CIP and Fab public hearing at 6:00 PM, and we have a September 26, 2013 Board Meeting at 7:00 PM. All meetings stated will be here in the boardroom. People interested in speaking at these meetings, at meetings of the Board must register with the Office of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-925-6115. That concludes my chair's remarks, and I now will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the Chief Executive Officer's report.
Thank you, and I...
Dr. Maxwell, thank you.
...join, uh, Dr. Eubanks and everyone else in welcoming everyone to the first Prince George's County Board of Education Meeting of the 2013-14 School Year, which, as I think everyone knows by now, is also my first Board Meeting as your new Chief Executive Officer, and it's also the first meeting for our new Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Monique Davis. So, welcome to you. Uh, I want you to know that I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to serve the community that I've lived in since second grade, and to return to the school district where I began my career in education. I have seen steady progress in student achievement over the past five years, and we will build on that foundation as we begin to work together to move our school district forward to even higher levels. I'm proud to say, as you've already heard from other folks, that, uh, the first week of school has gone very smoothly. I commend our staff for the hard work and the dedication that made this possible, and I want to extend also a special thanks to our Supporting Services staff. These employees worked tirelessly over the summer to prepare schools for our students, and they worked especially hard over the last two weeks to ensure that our two new school sites at Oxon Hill High School and Avalon Elementary School, and I should add, Dawswell Brooks as well, were ready for students on the very first day of school. Thank you to everyone who was involved in that process. Dr. Eubanks has already mentioned the Back-to-School Fair, so I will, uh, pass on that part of it, but I do, uh, want to address, uh, you know, my own work. Uh, over the next six months, I'll be focused on listening, observing, and learning as much as I possibly can about the people, processes, and organizational structure of our school district. I'll be out visiting as many schools as possible to look at class size and facility conditions and utilization, as well as teaching and learning, so that we can see what is working, what isn't, where we have some options for the expansion of successful programs. So far, I've had the pleasure of meeting students and staff and parents at over 15 schools and at the Bladensburg Bus Lot. I'll also be working on building a strong leadership team that supports our mission and goals and has the talent to get us where we want to go as a school system. Throughout this process, I will keep all of our stakeholders informed on where we are and what the next steps will be. My goal is for our community to come together and to work in concert to ensure that students in Prince George's County receive the highest quality of public education possible. Look forward to meeting students, staff, and parents as I visit our many school and office sites, and I encourage you to share your input and suggestions. I wish everyone all the best as we start off a new school year.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. On behalf of, of your Board colleagues, welcome.
Thank you.
And so... And so, what a, what a privilege and pleasure it is to have worked with you so far. We look forward to that continued relationship.
Thank you. I hope we can environmentally carpool again as we visit that school. That was great on the first day.
You, you come to my house at five o'clock in the morning next time, though.
We'll pick you up next time.
Okay, we are at item number 4.0, Public Comment on Agenda Items. We have one registered speaker for Public Comment on Agenda Items and eight registered speakers for Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Remember, you must be registered before you can speak. The board will not address the comments. You have three minutes to speak, and if you exceed your allotted time, at the sound of the buzzer, you may complete your sentence only. Please leave a copy of your statement in the file box located next to the microphone. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public comment process to move smoothly. Thanks so much. Our first speaker on Agenda, Agenda Items is Melody Spruill, talking about the Mental Health Initiative. Are you here, Melody? Okay, Melody's not here. We'll see if we can get her. Okay, we'll move on to Public Comment Speakers on Non-Agenda Items. Our first registered speaker is Mr. Laron Allen. Please proceed.
I would like to thank the board and the School Board President for allowing me to speak this evening. First of all, I would like to thank you all for allowing us to have a principal at Furman Heights High School. I think the school is doing very well. One of the things I'm concerned about, being a new parent of PG County Schools, that we would like to have, see more visibility of the beautiness of the school. I volunteer to paint the parking lot, if I can get to paint. So, that's one of the things, we want to have the community to come out and see if the school is more beautiful on the outside as well as on the inside. Number two, I would like to thank all of the district service staff that always see me when I come in the front door and have my problems or situations, just to thank the school for doing a good job. All the bus drivers that was able to take my daughter to school last year during the bad weather, storms. Those are things that I look forward to, because I have a very stressful job, and you all say the parents don't show up. I will show up if you let me know about the meetings. See, I don't look on the app, or I don't look on the bulletin board, but Channel Four tells me about the meetings. So, if you tell Channel Four, "I will be here," and I will know about it. So, once again, I thank you all for allowing me to come here. I thank you all for allowing me to have a, a good school for my daughter to attend. It's very safe, and the environment is good. The principal now, we have Ms. Walker, is in place. I was coming here to talk to make sure that we have a principal. But we have a good principal now. We have Ms. Nicholson there. Sorry she left, but now, we're, we kind of got the ball rolling. So, once again, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to speak. And the last thing I would like to say, make sure that the community service bus that picks up these kids at the metro, and I know that's the issue with Sharon Baker and not the school board, but I see a lot of your young kids getting on that school bus, going out doing community service work. And we need to cut those numbers down so we can have the kids going into the schools and not doing bad things in the community. So, whenever you all need this parent to come out and help you all out doing anything, I'm here. So, I hear a lot of times, people say, "Parents don't show up." But I am a parent of a fourteen, fifteen-year-old sophomore at Furman Heights High School. And don't take everything to Oxon Hill. Bring things over to Furman Heights. We, we, we want to have some of that beautification, too. So, Dr. Well, you got a can of paint, I'll be more than happy to start painting the parking lot this weekend, because I think I'll be off from work. Okay? Thank you. And my school board representative, I don't know who she is, for Furman Heights. Oh, boy, another one's not here. That's not good. Okay, so, I thank you for my time, and enjoy.
I, this should be fair to mention under circumstances, that Ms. Eubanks is sick this evening, which is why she could not be with us. Next up is Mr. Charles Smalley. Is Mr. Smalley here? Okay, our third speaker on the list is Tommy Makila. Is it, did I pronounce it right, Makila?
Tommy Makila.
Makila.
Yes.
Mr. Makila, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Makila, and my son attends Accra Kick Academy. I have heard from Dr. Maxwell, our county executive, and the Board of Educational Members, how you all want to attract middle-class families to the PG County Schools. I very much agree with that goal. However, attracting and retaining middle-class families in the school system will be difficult as long as the system is running in its current disorganized and haphazard manner. To be frank, many aspects of the school system are being run and executed as if things were being done for the very first time. The same mistakes are being repeated year after year, things being organized at the very last minute, and advanced communication about issues and changes is often substandard. What I'm talking about are the nuts and bolts of the school system. As usual, the bus information was mailed to us late, and not in time for Transition Day, as was promised. On the first day of school, the bus did not pick up my son from his bus stop, and in the afternoon, he was dropped off at the wrong stop, clearly indicating that the bus drivers were not familiar with their routes. Last Thursday, only a couple days before the school was to start, we received email notice that PayPam's is no longer used for lunch payments. However, that very same day, the school system's websites still directed pay, parents to the PayPam's website. Our school system is the only one I know where schools do not customarily organize a back-to-school event before school starts. And in the year 2013, our school system still, still does not require, require all teachers to have class websites. I could continue, but I think you get the point. As I have observed the school system, I have tried to figure out what the overarching problem is. What I have concluded is that our school system has an organizational culture that is very averse to advanced planning and being prepared. Somehow, our organizational culture says it is okay not to be prepared. You sort out problems only when you absolutely have to. Our annual bus fiasco on the first day of school is a prime example of this lack of planning. Drivers are obviously not trained well enough beforehand, and all the problems are sorted out the first day, as parents observe the chaos shaking their heads in disbelief. With better planning and training, most of the problems could surely be worked out beforehand. The same mentality is reflected in the lack of a back-to-school event before school starts. Every other school, school district I know has such an event at every school, capturing parents and students when they are most eager about the school year and benefit most from the orientation. But not in our system. We can't be bothered with such advanced planning. Our only back-to-school nights are several weeks into the school year. We parents observe firsthand how the system is being run, and we see the communications that come from the school district. We judge the system, the schools, and the teachers based on what we see and what is communicated to us. Unfortunately, what I've seen so far this year has not impressed me. To be fair, things happen that are beyond our control, and a large system like ours is difficult to run. Still, many school district functions repeat year after year, so it is not unreasonable to expect that we learn from past experiences and mistakes and that we plan ahead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Makila. Next is Jocelyn Ford.
My name is Jocelyn Ford. I have a son who attends CMIT in Laurel. He has been enrolled in CMIT since the seventh grade, and I've seen so much growth in him. I think it is a good idea for CMIT to expand to the southern end of the county. But I would like to also ask if PG George's County Public School System, if you could provide busing for these kids to go to school, because right now, as a parent, we're paying for busing, and it's a undue stress on us. And I'd really like the school, and I would like to see, expand in the southern county, and I would like my son to be one of the first class to graduate in 2019, 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Mr. David Kahn.
First of all, I'd like to welcome Dr. Kevin Maxwell back to Prince George's County Public Schools, congratulate you on your appointment as CEO, and wish you every success, particularly when it comes to student achievement. That being said, I have to tell you that I'm probably one of the strongest critics of this board and administration, and one of the strongest supporters of this board and administration. I call them as I see them when things come up. I'm a little concerned about a couple of things. I know, I have every reason to believe that you are dedicated to the success of our students. But I wonder where your concern for our students was a few months ago when we were looking for a superintendent? Where was your concern when you would have to come before the public with your competition and answer questions? Where was your concern for our students when you would have to convince a majority of the school board that you were the one to lead our school system? Where was your concern for the students when you would have to lead by achieving consensus with the board instead of ruling by decree for most all items? So, I'm concerned about that. I hope someday you'll address that. That being said, I see on this agenda many items that probably don't have to come before the school board at all. So, if you're willing to bring these items before the school board, that's already a good thing, and I'm happy to see it. One thing that does concern me about the law that could really mess things up for us, there is a belief that a clause in the legislation permits the board to override your actions by a supermajority vote. I'd like to read you what it says. "The county board shall require a two-thirds vote of all voting members of the county board to take an action that is contrary to an action of the chief executive officer." You've taken one action, they legally can take an action that is contrary to your action. Doesn't say that your action is then invalid. It's, now, you have two actions on the same subject, two different sets of guidance for the staff, for the teachers, for the whole community, and that could lead to litigation. I hope this will be changed in the next legislative session to become a real override provision. I'd like to hear from you publicly that until that happens, you will treat any such supermajority vote of the board, which probably won't happen, given the board's new composition, but that you would treat that as an override, and you would refrain from pursuing your policy or action that is contrary to the action that a supermajority of the board decided to take. All these things being said, I hope that we have harmony, that you have every, every bit of success, and I'm happy to work with you towards that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Next up is Ms. Donna Beehe. Hello, did I pronounce your last name right?
Yes, Beehe.
Okay, thank you, welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening, members of the school board. And Dr. Maxwell, I want to welcome you to, back to Prince George's County, and we're excited about a bright new future with you. We're very excited. My name is Donna Beehe again, and I am the School Counselor for Green Belt Elementary and Berwin Heights Elementary. At the June 18th board meeting, I spoke of the importance of all students in Prince George's County having access to a comprehensive and effective school counseling program, not just some. There are currently, I believe, eleven elementary schools with no school counselor on staff, and many more with only a part-time counselor. And how may I ask, can a counselor have an effective counseling program when they are only there two or three times a week? Now, at the last meeting, the possibility of pupil personnel workers handling the management and oversight of 504 plans in schools without counselors was discussed. As one who's been in the trenches with these plans for sixteen years, I wanted to speak about them. 504 plans are a living, working document of interventions and accommodations developed for students with, with a demonstrated disability. These are to enable the student to effectively access the school environment and be successful in the classroom. The creation of required annual review of this plan is only a small portion in the process. 504s have to be updated during the school year. Many, maybe the teacher feels it's not being effective, and they ask to remeet with a parent to make changes. Sometimes, a parent feels a 504 isn't being effectively implemented by the teacher and asks the counselor to intervene. An unsatisfactory report card would also be another reason that we'd have to go back, you know, to the drawing board on them. Counselors themselves are often a part of the interventions in the plan. Five out of ten of my students' 504 plans at Green Belt require daily monitoring of agenda books, afternoon homework check-ins, or weekly counseling groups for social and organizational skill improvement. School counselors are the only staff members qualified to conduct counseling groups. The school system is legally bound to implement these interventions in accordance with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. How can PPWs with their own multitude of responsibilities and schools on their caseload possibly do this? Many PPW service three to four schools. I also have students with IEPs that require weekly counseling. These are only some of the many reasons we need to re-lock a full-time school counselor position in every elementary school. The next few parents are going to discuss a few of the others, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beehe. Next up is Shayna Skolnick.
Good evening. Good evening. I am here tonight to discuss the impact of school-based budgeting. I have a kindergartner and a third grader at Green Belt Elementary, and I myself am a product of Prince George's County Public Schools. Because of school-based budgeting, the principal could not afford to keep a full-time counselor and pay for all of the other necessary positions and supplies. Our counselor, Ms. Beehe, is now part-time, and her time and attention are split between two schools. My children no longer have daily access to a school counselor, which I believe is detrimental to their school experience and to the well-being of all the children at Green Belt Elementary. I would like you to consider locking the counselor position so that it is protected from the school-based budgeting process. To give you some examples of the importance of having the counselor, I will share a few of our experiences. Our eldest daughter had many troubles adjusting to kindergarten and needed additional support and attention from the principal and the counselor. The counselor was instrumental in helping our daughter get accustomed to eating in the cafeteria, walking to class by herself, et cetera. I don't know if our daughter would have, would have succeeded without the intervention of someone with a child psychology background. If she hadn't, and we had left the school system, then that would have been detrimental to the system and the county as a whole. The following year, my daughter experienced a bullying issue with a child in her first grade class. The counselor worked with the girls to mediate the situation. On another occasion, a child in my daughter's class confessed to me while on, while chaperoning a field trip, that he was not getting any food at home and was being beaten by a family member. Because the school had a counselor who was there every day, I was able to alert her to this child's troubles. Finally, our counselor was running a very effective positive behavior reward system to encourage good behavior. As a result, serious discipline problems at our school have been reduced. However, without a counselor to run this crucial program, it is only a matter of time before those kinds of issues crop up again. I advocated keeping the counselor position directly to our principal, and she agreed with me and other parents that this position is vital to the running of the school. However, she had a Sophie's Choice to make with the budget, because there were simply not enough funds in the school-based budget to pay for all of the necessary positions. If the counselor position were locked, she and other principals would not be required to make such a difficult choice. Finally, I ask you to consider this as an issue of school safety. After the terrible tragedy last year in Connecticut, can we really afford to not have a school counselor on the premises of every county school to help ensure the mental stability of the students and staff? Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will require and pay for a counselor at every school so that the school-based budget can be used for what it was intended.
Thank you, Ms. Skolnick. And our final speaker for this evening is Jacob Novick.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Jacob Novick. I'm a bilingual character educator. I'm a bilingual character education coordinator for Prince George's County Public Schools and a parent of four children. Two of my children are school-aged, one attends a local private school, the other attends or is returning to a local public school. My daughter that is returning was just identified tag, but at the same time, she was recently diagnosed with a medical condition. One manifestation of her condition is anxiety in school or in other mentally challenging environments. With the help of a counselor, we've completed a 504 to possibly provide her accommodations. My concern and my wife's concern is whether a school with a half-time counselor will be able to meet her and many other children's social and emotional needs. The county has many skilled and accomplished educators, but they themselves are overwhelmed or at least highly focused on meeting many of the new initiatives and benchmarks. For example, Common Core teaching style adjustments, student learning objectives, and framework for teaching standards and expectations, all of which are very important and needed for academic success. Is it realistic to expect teachers to assume the role of a counselor and educator? If other out-of-classroom staff agree to pick up the duties of an absent counselor, what important job roles are they forfeiting? Are they properly chained? Many counselors have spent years becoming experts in their fields, ensuring that the hierarchy of needs are met for our students. By removing or limiting the presence of their main advocate, are we really doing justice to the young people that school serve? The reality is that students nowadays carry a huge burden at times. They're affected by academic expectations, economic hardships, exhausted parents and teachers, among many other factors. A full-time counselor provides reprieve to these students, a familiar face to associate with assistants. They don't have to take the risk of speaking out because a trained professional can identify them and provide support. They don't have to endure bullying because a trained expert can teach them coping strategies. They don't have to suck it up and deal with a bad day because it's a trained professional that can nurture them and talk them through their emotions. For me, and I'm sure many others, the benefit of a counselor brings to the school the idea of creating a positive climate, providing resources to people in need, and ensuring the emotional well-being of children. All these are vital to academic success. To say other people will assume the role on top of their existing duties puts us in a precarious situation where something could possibly get done without fidelity. Is that a risk worth taking? I don't think for a second that schools without a full-time counselor don't have children's best interests at hand. I just wonder if they're feeling the effects of losing that student advocate. Are other employees feeling overwhelmed by their new duties? Common Core will provide us an excellent platform for teaching our children to the investigative learning process, and also an opportunity to connect learning with reality. But many experts will tell you that if the hierarchy of needs are not met, then the student's mind is not open to learning. So without a counselor, do these students' needs get overlooked for other students? Or do academic and learning time of some students get sacrificed until all student needs can be met? I truly feel that these are questions we need to ask before writing a counselor's off as an unlocked position in our student budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Novick. Before I wrap it up, one last chance is whether or not Melody Spruill or Charles Smalley are here. Okay, if not, then that concludes our public comments speakers for the day. Thank you so much, citizens, for making your voice heard. Moving on, there are no legislative agenda or discussion items on this evening's agenda, so we move to item number 7.0, the consent agenda. Colleagues, I now will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of consent agenda items number 7.1 through 7.4.
Thank you. Dr. Eubanks, items 7.1 through 7.4 before the board for approval of a license with Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC for installation of a 100 megabit circuit at Bonny John Media Centers, proclamations commemorating the following in Prince George's County Public Schools National Day of Service and Remembrance, September 12, Constitution Day, September 17, and National Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 to October 15.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell. Colleagues, we're now at the point of approving items 7.1 through 7.4 under the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve these items?
Some, uh...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items number 7.1 through 7.4 under the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Oh, thank you. I gotta wait for that point. Ms. Epps.
Thank you. Can I, may I ask a question about one of the items?
Let's, let's give it a shot.
Okay. So the, what? Okay, the Comcast cable license. So I'm just trying to, this is a new contract?
Ma'am, this is an agreement, we're currently working on the upgrading... Hi. This is an agreement that we're working on with installing new phone systems throughout the district, and we need this circuit so the vendor can proceed. This is a no-cost circuit for us to put into one of our data centers.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson.
Yay.
Ms. Epps.
Aye.
Ms. Higgins.
Yay.
Ms. Jacobs.
Oh, Jesus.
Dr. Kaufman.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Ms. Waller.
Aye.
Ms. Museario.
Aye.
Ms. Boston.
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks.
Yay. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, colleagues. Before I move to the budget consent agenda items, I'd like to recognize anyone interested in pulling any items from the budget consent agenda today. Ms. Jacobs, okay, you're bustin' where? I believe you. I believe you, though.
Maybe I do.
No, you didn't, but, go ahead. Yes, but, okay, now I can see, all right. Only if the light comes on.
Thank you. My comments are relative to 8.1 and 8.2, and it's not necessarily just related to CMIT, but related to all charter school contracts. I think the language needs to be more specific relative to the lottery process being conducted centrally and not at the individual charter schools, and it needs to be at every level of the waiting list, so from the beginning throughout the waiting list to ensure that parents have a better opportunity to know how the process works. So, that's one, I think the language...
So you want to, we want to just pull those off now, finish the consent agenda items and do it next?
So you want to do that way? Okay, so I want to call items 8.1 and 8.2.
Any others?
I don't think they're...
So that way we'll just go on to the next. That's fine. I'm winging it. Any others? No? Okay, so what we'll do is, I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of budget consent agenda items number 8.3 to 8.8 and 8.9 to 8.19, 8.10 to 8.19.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Seeking approval of the board for the contract approval for the expansion of CMIT, contract approval for the replication of CMIT in South County, the fiscal 14 appropriation reassignments for July 1 through July 4, 2013, expenditure requirements for September 2013, fiscal year 14 non-resident tuition rates, purchase of Amplify Access tablet solution, ratification of the 2014 salary improvement for employees on the executive salary schedule, ratification of the 2013-14 employee contracts for confidential employees. I think we, did you, you pulled 14? I'm sorry, you pulled the ratification of PGCEA for this evening, and ratification of the fiscal year 14 tentative agreement for FLCIOCLC SEIU Local 400, and the fiscal year 14 tax-exempt municipal lease purchase agreement financing for the procurement of replacement buses, non-bus vehicles, textbooks, and instructional computers, the third-party inspection for the auditorium at Crosson High School, additional architectural and engineering services for the Crosson High School auditorium, change order for the temporary class utilization at Friendly High School, a change order for the parking lot configuration at Glendale Elementary School, a change order for Greenbelt Middle School replacement because of error and omissions, change order for Greenbelt Middle School replacement code-mandated and unforeseen revisions, and a lease agreement for Prince George's County Public School copier and printer management services and quality school construction bonds realignment.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell, for clarity in the beginning of that, those first two items, public charter school, the contract for Chesapeake Math and IT Academy, those two are pulled from the, from the consent agenda?
From the consent, yes, but it's still my recommendation to the board.
Understood, understood. Colleagues, we're now at the point of adopting items 8.3 to 8.8 and 8.10 to 8.19 under the budget consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt those?
So moved.
Moved?
Yes, sir.
And seconded? It's been moved and seconded to adopt items number 8.3 to 8.8 and 8.10 to 8.19 under the budget consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Dr. Eubanks, I did put in, I just want to say, point out that I'm pleased to join my colleagues in ratifying the salary schedule complex for the office, Board of Education Office staff, the executive salary staff, confidential employees, as well as Local Union 400. We look forward to joining the other unions as well, but it's a pleasure to be able to join with my colleagues in voting yes.
Well put, Ms. Higgins. Ms. Epps?
Just a quick question about 8.6. So I, this, I can't find the language now, but somewhere here it talks about the, the software that goes along with the tablets is proprietary education something, and I just wanted to make sure that that was compliant with the goal, with Common Core?
Okay, so...
Wes?
Yes, sir. The Amplify tablets, we're looking at several different types of tablets. We've been testing them, preparing for Common Core and PARC testing, online testing. One of the things that we're interested in with the Amplify tablet is that we can manage these devices remotely, we can install software and things like that. It uses the Android operating system. The management capabilities of the product allow teachers to manage those in the classroom, very nice. It's very efficient for them, as well as these are PARC-certified devices, which means we can utilize these devices for PARC testing in the coming school year.
Okay. So what about, what impact does the fact that not every school is wireless have on the ability, sorry, the ability to use the tablets?
This individual contract is for a specific pilot, it is for a specific school...
And that school's wired.
And our goal with this is to study these, the use of these tablets over the next two years. We have some major decisions to make over the next few years with how we're going to utilize mobile devices in our environment. All of our schools will be wireless by the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. Last question. Compatibility and/or any conflict with, because some of our schools have grants and have been awarded, my, Apple?
No, ma'am, this is, this won't, you know, conflict with any of those things. This is specifically to test how they, how they're managed in the classroom. There are thousands, you know, five, 600,000 different applications available for this device, as well as the company itself makes curriculum, Common Core curriculum for the devices.
Right, okay, that's, alrighty. Well, thank you. I look forward to hearing information about how well it performs.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. I just wanted, I have received, and my colleagues may have as well, a number of questions, emails regarding the number of purchase, change orders that are on this agenda item. And I just wanted to assure the public, there's been extensive conversation with staff regarding this, and that these change orders have been reviewed very carefully for appropriateness to bring forward. So even though it's on the consent agenda item, it is on that consent agenda item because it has been looked at carefully both by the board and staff, and we will continue to monitor change orders for their appropriateness. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Any other questions? Okay, well, seeing no other questions, we've been moved and seconded to approve items number 8.3 to 8.8 and 8.10 to 8.19. With no other discussion, Mrs. Wilson, please call the roll.
Dr. Anderson.
I remind my colleagues, sorry, I remind my colleagues that our student member does not vote on budget consent agenda items.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Epps?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Dr. Kaufman?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Dr. Eubanks?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I will now revisit 9.09 consent agenda items, we're going to move on and have a discussion about 8.1 and 8.2. Ms. Jacobs, please get a start.
Thank you, my apologies. So as I was saying, I just wanted to see the language, and I was trying to find the section of the nearly 70-page contract, but the language specific to the way the lottery process would work, I'd like to make sure that that language is broad to, excuse me, specific to state that it will happen at the beginning, but also throughout the entire process to include wait lists. And that comes from not just specialty programs, but just complaints that I've gotten to from parents who are on wait lists for tag schools, for all kinds of different programs. And administratively, I think the CEO would have to come up with what that looks like, but I think the language in the contracts for all charters should be, should also include that the lottery process will include that. I think that would be the impetus for how the CEO would decide how that would work for parents. And then the second piece is the requirement that charter schools provide a report to the board about funds and grants that it receives. We get an annual grant report, so I would recommend that since the contract is silent, unless I missed it, to when that will happen, that it's either mid-year and at the end of the school year, or when the regular annual grant report comes to the board. I think for charter schools, it probably should be twice a year, that's just my suggestion because we have transportation issues, we have different things that affect charter schools that wouldn't necessarily affect other schools. I think that sums up what I would like to see in terms of changes to the contract.
Ms. Battle, could you, we're both looking here, I thought I had it at one point too, the specific language in the contract regarding the lottery and the use of the lottery?
Yes, sir.
So that we can take a look at it?
It's on page, it's on page eight, paragraph seven, and it currently says that if more eligible students apply, then can be accommodated, admission to the school be determined by a drawing using the school system's lottery. So in the past, when, when we first started having charter schools, the charter schools went through Pupil Accounting and School Boundaries, and Pupil Accounting and School Boundaries did the lottery at the same time that they did the lottery for the specialty schools, like TAG and PUL and... And in, in CMIT's original agreement, we, we did the lottery for them the first year, which is usually the largest lottery, and then they had asked that in subsequent years they do their own lottery. But I've spoken to them about this on more than one occasion, and they are completely in agreement with Pupil Accounting and School Boundaries doing their lottery, you know, moving forward.
So are there, is there a specific, you want to make a motion of some kind for a specific change in that language?
Well, I could, I guess I could craft some language if that's what you want me to do, but essentially, I would move that the language be more specific to state that at all levels of the lottery process to include the waiting list, which is beyond the initial lottery process, that it would be done at the, at the central office level. So for example, if, so for example, right now, it appears that, and it may be different with the tag schools, but right now it appears that depending on how many open seats there are, Pupil Accounting might send a couple of names as opposed to parents being able to know, where do I stand in this process? Why not just, you know, make sure that the process is open and transparent at every phase?
Well...
So I don't know how... So, I don't know how to, I don't know if, if there's recommendations for, for how to change that language, but right now, I think it's not specific enough.
Okay. So, a couple of things about how we may wanna move here. I know that there are some folks from the school who are here, and I don't know whether or not they would be able to consent, and either way, we could kind of pass a motion contingent on their later approval, but if they hear and think that some of these language changes are okay, it could help us to move a little more sufficiently. So, the bottom line is, is a motion to give more specific language in the lottery process to say that the, that, that the charter school will use all phases of the school's lottery and admissions process.
So, the current language says if more eligible students apply, then can be accommodated, admission to the school will be determined by a drawing using the school system's lottery.
Can I explain like how it's currently done through pupil accounting and school boundaries right now? Because they do have it posted on the website, so that you can go in with your student ID number and see where you are on the lottery, so you could see that you're like number nine for fourth grade at Heather Hills. So, if, are you saying that you would want them to do the exact same thing for the charter schools as well?
Yes, and I think if, and perhaps using the current language that you have, perhaps you could add to include every phase of vacancies or openings, and to include the waiting list. And then maybe just say in accordance with how the, whatever the board policy is relative to that, 'cause I think at, at the end of the day, there's an administrative procedure that applies, and I think if you put that language in there, then that, that specifically says, there's somewhere to go. And it also provides an opportunity for parents to know where to go. You know, I just, just this week, I had a couple of parents call and say, I don't know what to do when I'm number two on a waiting list. I'm not suggesting that we handwalk everything, but at least if they can refer to an administrative procedure, and the contract suggests that as well.
Could I say in accordance with the, the administrative procedure? Okay.
Yeah.
So that sounds like a motion?
And add waiting list, and actually put waiting list in the language, is what I would like to see.
That sounds like a motion, does it have a second?
A second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion on, on the motion? Dr. Maxwell, I see Mr. Valentine, his, yours is not discussion on this motion, okay?
I was, I was only gonna ask, we sort of, there was a reference made to the school being represented here, do we wanna ask them for their opinion on that or concurrence, or do you wanna go ahead and ask?
That would be a great idea, Dr. Maxwell. I hate to put you guys on the spot on something like this, but if they're representative of some school, could you come on up and chat with us? Tell me, I'm sorry, state your name again and your position with, with the school?
Yeah, my name is Omar Rosmaral, I'm the director of CMIT, also representing the Chesapeake Lighthouse Foundation. We are all okay with all the changes, so you may run the lottery process centrally. It's okay for us, so we accept all that changes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Well, let's go with your second one first, before I ask that question. You had, didn't you have a second motion for a change, or did that cover it?
The second motion would be that the, which is actually, I did find the page for that, which is page four of the contract, the reporting of gifts and donations. The second change or motion would be to just add that there be a date for reporting requirements, which would be either, I think biannually should be sufficient, so mid-year and end of year, in conjunction with the board's regular grant reporting, report.
So that's under, on page four, item D, report, reporting gifts and donations?
Yes.
All right, so the motion is to add a requirement for biannual reporting on gifts and donations. Is there a second to that motion? It's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion on the motion? May I invite my colleagues from CMIT back up again? So the motion on the floor, sir, sorry to do this kind of public negotiation, but we'll make this happen. So, so the motion on the floor essentially is, there is a requirement around gifts and donations, and we're making the, the motion on the floor is to have, have you give us a biannual report on gifts and donations?
Yeah, we can give biannual reports, we are okay.
Okay. So, any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. All right, that motion carries, does that cover your issues, Ms. Jacobs? Thank you very much. Next up is Ms. Higgins, followed by Mr. Valentine.
Yes, thank you. The reporting gifts and donations and grants item in this contract, and I assume it's in other contracts as well. Since we haven't had that reporting, it would be valuable to get a report on where each charter school is and start. Would there be a problem with maybe having it to us, you know, the end of September?
So is it, is it true that we've never received, so, do the charter schools who currently have this clause in their contract give a report on gifts and donations to the school board?
If they're reporting to us already what, what they are, I assume the office has it, the board hasn't received it? If it's possible to get what that, each school is getting in regards to donations?
So far, to my knowledge, most of the donations have been through, through, most of the large grants have been through MSTE, so we can provide that information, because our budget and accounting folks will have all that information.
But if they're supposed to be reporting already the gifts, donations, and grants, it would be helpful to have that report, just as to where we are now?
I can't speak to whether they've been doing it, I understand it's in the contract, but to whom they've been reporting it, I think is the question, have they been giving it to us already in a annual form, as opposed to twice a year, or?
I can, I can check with Ms. White in the charter school office.
Okay.
Yeah, well then maybe, maybe that's it, if you check with Ms. White and then get back to the board as to what would be a reasonable date to, to provide that information, that'd be helpful, just to know when it would be.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one small question, or, yeah, that transportation is provided at the northern charter school, will it also be provided to the students at the southern campus? I would assume CMIT knows, or you know, Mr. Kaufman?
Is that a question to our, to our CMIT colleagues?
Well, or?
Transportation is the responsibility of the school under the charter law, and I understand parents are paying for it, is what I was told, for.
Is it also gonna be in the southern school, that they're providing transportation, that parents pay, or is there no transportation?
Do you know the answer to that question from the contract?
They're not required under the contract to provide transportation, and so I don't know at this point if they've decided whether they want to do it or not.
Okay, could, could we ask them?
Sure.
Sure. Getting your exercise today.
Yeah, sit closer for us.
We haven't decided yet, so we need to think about that, while, because what I know, as Ms. Battle told us, we are not required to provide the transportation, but we haven't decided if we will provide or not.
Okay, thank you, helpful, no. Thank you.
Ms. Higgins, is that?
I'm done.
Okay, you're done. Any other questions or discussion on items 8.1 or 8.2? Mr. Valentine, you're all set, Mr. Valentine, am I correct? Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve items 8.1 and 8.2?
I'm moved, I so moved.
Moved by Ms. Boston? Yes, ma'am. What am I doing wrong?
The motion should be as amended.
Exactly, I said that, my mic was off, you didn't hear that? Okay. Move items 8.1 and 8.2 as amended.
So moved again.
You moved again, seconded by Ms. Waller. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do I call the roll on this? Let's call the roll, Mrs. Wilson.
Dr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs? Dr. Kaufman? Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Ms. Waller? Ms. Boston? Dr. Eubanks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that concludes items on the non-consent agenda. There are no items on governance unfinished business, so we now move to item 11.0, new business first readers, and I will now yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items number 11.1 and 11.2 under new business first readers.
They are on the agenda as first readers and require no discussion. One is on the mental health initiative, and the other is on dance education textbooks.
What'd you say, sir? It was that?
I said they're on the agenda as first readers with no discussion required. The first one is on school mental health initiative, and the other is on dance education textbooks.
All right, and with no discussion necessary, may I have a motion to accept items 11.1, 11.2 under new business as first readers?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there, oh, there is no discussion, so, or let me ask, I need for any discussion, just in case? Discussion, no? Only?
I'm not sure you're required to have a vote on first reader.
I'm not sure either, but I, I, I read what's on my sheet, so, all right. Yes, you do, Dr. Maxwell.
Okay.
So we are voting on this first reader item, and it has been moved and seconded. So, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and items number 11.1 and 11.2 have been accepted as first readers. There are no follow-up items this evening, and as our executive session will continue, we will not formally adjourn our public session, but we will now reconvene to executive session. So folks, have a wonderful evening and a great school year. Thank you.